Of board.
Commissioner Wright, confirm?
Commissioner Griffiths, confirm.
Very well, thank you. Okay, so moving on, we will go to the announcement. Commissioner Seitz, could you, you've been briefed on how to handle that? Very good. Please, please hit the button and away we go.
Um, this applicant criteria must be listed.
Speak up just a little bit, please.
Okay, this means we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state which you believe to, which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot add the Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure of the to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on application, the participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such requests through the continuance or extension of the record.
Very good. Thank you very much. With that out of the way, experte contact and the judicial announcement, I think we're on to the staff report.
So the staff member that's going to be presenting this is Leanne Wagner on our team, and she should be joining us via Zoom. We could see her earlier, but I do not.
I did see her earlier and uh. Okay. Okay.
Went out and then she hopefully.
Is this, is this the hidden key with a hammer to continue or?
About to.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
There we go.
Leanne has joined, rejoined us.
Leanne, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Leanne. Can you hear me?
Yay, yes, I can hear everybody.
Sorry about that, Leanne. So bringing, bringing us back, so Leanne is our, one of our assistant planners, and so she's the case planner for this item that's before your commission tonight. She was not able to hear some of those other announcements, so I'm just going to restate it. So we finished the, the announcements leading up to the case and we're ready for your item for CUP two three dash zero zero two one. So when you're ready, Leanne, you can go ahead and open and do a screen share off of the presentation, I believe, and we can take it from there.
Okay, just a moment. Does Faye have the presentation up or do I need to open it?
If you're doing it on your laptop and sharing your screen, you would have to have it up on your screen.
All right, no problem, just.
Just tell me it's when to go forward.
Hey, why don't we go ahead and open it on your end and she'll let you know when to advance the slides.
I may beat her to it, just a minute. She beat me to it. Be great. Thank you all. Thanks for your patience during some unforeseen technical issues with audio. Hello, everyone. As Clay mentioned, I'm Leanne Wagner, one of the assistant planners for the city. Tonight I'll be presenting the case for a conditional use permit at eleven thirteen East Fourth Street. And I enter the entire staff report for CUP twenty three dash zero zero two one into the record. The owner and applicant for this request is Alyssa Zavor. Her request is to turn her four bedroom, single family home on East Fifth Street in Newburgh into a short term vacation rental. The zoning for this area is R two medium density residential. And the applicable code portion for the, for review of her request can be found in sections fifteen point two two five point zero six zero and fifteen point four four five point three hundred to three fifty of the Newburgh Municipal Code. Next slide, please. This next slide is an aerial image of the residence showing its frontage on the East Fifth Street and its adjacency to South River and South Chehalis Street. Next slide, please. Next are clips from the zoning map showing the home's context within the medium density district R two. And likewise, its adjacency to the central business district C three to the northwest and to R three to the east and northwest as well. The utility map shows that the house is also connected to the major water sewer lines running south of the home along East Fourth Street. The city's GIS also indicates that a stormwater inlet grate is located at the northeast corner of the subject property along South Chehalis Street. Next slide, please. Looking at the criteria under which to assess the request by the applicant, we find the code sections mentioned previously. Important, excuse me, importantly, section fifteen point two two five point zero six zero A in regard to the character of the dwelling in relation to the rest of the neighborhood. The single family dwelling is a four bedroom house with a generous driveway for use by the potential short term renters. These characteristics are in keeping with the immediate neighbors to the east, west, north, and south. Next slide, please. Furthermore, it is noted that this neighborhood property is a short distance from the central business district of town, which would be convenient for vacation renters and would therefore meet the code requirements stated in section fifteen point two two five point zero six zero B. Next slide, please. Lastly, this section states in criterion C that the proposed use is consistent with this code. This includes Newburgh Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point four four five, Article seven, which we will look at next. Next slide, please. The highlights for this section of code are as follows. First, that the vacation rental home must be a single family dwelling, which the house at eleven thirteen East Fourth Street is. Second, the dwelling must be registered with the city and the owner pay a transient lodging tax. And the owner has indicated that she will register with the city and pay the required tax. Third, maintain standards. The owner is providing six off street parking spaces, occupancy for eight guests, and that's no more than two persons for each bedroom. Waste collection on each Friday and will prohibit RVs or any other temporary shelters on the premises. And lastly, that the owner acknowledges her responsibility to post contact information for herself and the police, vacation rental standards, maximum occupancy, and Friday as the garbage pickup day. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty four dash zero four with conditions approving conditional use permit CUP twenty three dash zero zero two one for a vacation rental home at eleven thirteen East Fourth Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three two two zero B C zero zero eight zero two. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. At this point, I'd like to open the public record for this, for this item, for the applicant. The applicant will have fifteen minutes to present anything. Any proponents will have five minutes, a primary opponent will have fifteen minutes. And along with any opponents will have five minutes besides the primary, and then the applicant can have the time for rebuttal if any of that is necessary. Do we have the applicant here tonight? Very well, thank you. Please step up to the mic here.
Right, so I.
So good, good and sit down and then hit the, hit the button and then tell us who you are, where you at and.
Sure. So I'm Alyssa Zavora. This is a house that I recently purchased. I'm here with my mom. She helped me purchase it and so this is actually still going to be my home. I do work remote, well, I work out of town mostly. I travel for my job and so I am in town less than I am out of town. And so I purchased this home to be close to my mother. We're from this area. Born and raised about less than ten miles away. And so we needed a place to come and see, visit my mom. So that is the intent. But since it's going to sit vacant for three fourths of the month, my intent is to rent it out as a vacation rental. But this is where I will be living when I am in town. It's furnished with my own personal belongings. It is listed as a four bedroom. There are actually five bedrooms in the house. So one bedroom will be my dedicated room. I also do have experience managing short term rentals for other people, which is kind of why I got the idea in order to be able to do this. So I am familiar with vetting people. It is a big concern of mine that my neighbors are happy. I have reached out to all of my neighbors personally. No one has expressed any negative comments to me. One of my neighbors is actually excited about it. She, she thinks it's great. And then I have a neighbor in the, in the neighborhood as well. He owns a landscape company. And he will be kind of my point of contact when I am out of town. He'll be coming and checking the mail. He'll be moving the garbages in and out when I'm not in town. And he is offered to come over anytime if there is any, you know. While he came over, I was out of town during that ridiculously cold snap. He came over and checked on my house and, you know, took care of a few things. So he's a local point of contact that can help with all of that. I think that's all I have in, you know, here if there's any questions. I did want to point something out, though, that was on the application that I noticed. On the first, on the first one, somewhere on the recitals, it says that Christian Peterson applied for a conditional use permit at for a vacation rental home at one one. So I don't know if it was a copy and paste error, but just want to make sure that it's known that it's myself applying for it.
Sure. Leanne, would you like to address that?
Yes, we've corrected that, Alyssa, so that will be signed correctly for you and not the previous vacation rental case that I had.
Yep. That's all I have unless.
Thank you. Yeah, is there any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Commissioner Wright. I'm going to express that on attachment one of your applica, application materials, you have a project statement in which you, and you've already commented that you have managed previous properties. Can you tell us a little bit about that experience?
Sure, these were just for some friends of mine. I used to live in Montana and I had a friend that moved out of Montana but wanted to rent her property. And so she had a four bedroom cabin in the mountains. I was familiar with her, with her house and her area. And so I, I took it over. I listed it on Airbnb. I managed it remotely, but it was in Bozeman, Montana, which I used to live there, so I had a lot of friends. And so it went quite smoothly. I was able to, you know, coordinate cleaning and the trash pickup and you know, the guests checking in and out and never had any problems with anybody in it. And then I also managed a couple of them in California for a guy that had a house. He had two properties on his house and one of the properties was something that he wanted to be able to come and go at, but he didn't have the time to manage it. And he, he knew who I was and knew that I'd had the experience. And so I managed those two properties for him as well.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And Ms. Zavora, I really wanted to thank you for your thoughtful project statement. It covers quite a few things, including your local contact, collecting mail. And I wanted to specifically touch on yard maintenance, mowing and general upkeep. It's one of the big things early on that was a big concern and complaint from some public testimony. And I thank you for really doing your due diligence to cover all these areas prior to a meeting even and commenting about them. So I really appreciate that, as well as your investing in such an older home and helping Newburgh keep its historical charm because it does have a significance on our community and I, I really appreciate that. No further questions?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this particular application? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Seeing no opposition and not needing to call any rebuttal, I don't think, we'll close the public hearing portion of the, of the of the application and move on to final recommendation from staff.
Excuse me. In conclusion, again, staff is recommending that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty four dash zero four with conditions approving conditional use permit CUP twenty three dash zero zero two one for a vacation rental home at eleven thirteen East Fourth Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three two two zero B C zero zero eight zero two.
Very well, thank you. Any final questions for staff? Hearing none. We'll move on to deliberation. What do we think about this? Or do we want to just go ahead to a motion?
I think this is a pretty straightforward application. There is no opposition, no conflict with staff. Any other commissioners have any other thoughts, comments? This is Commissioner Wright, a move to approve Planning Commission Order twenty twenty four zero four zero three conditional use permit CUP twenty three dash zero zero two one for a vacation rental home at one 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 three East Fourth Street, Yamhill County, including Exhibits A and B.
Very well, I have a motion. Do I have a second? A second. Well, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Abby Seitz?
Yes.
Very well.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Very well, motion passes to approve conditional use permit CUP twenty three dash zero zero two one. Congratulations. Moving on, we have another conditional use permission, which is a quasi judicial public hearing. At this point, I'd like to call for any abstentions jurisdiction or experte contact noting the previous experte contact still applies for our brand new commissioner. Hearing none. Could we move on to the announcement again, please? So we gotta do, just, just for your information, we had to do one for each one of the ones, the quasi judicial hearings that requires.
Uh, okay. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed.
Speak up just a little bit.
This means that we must advise all of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of the application. The planning staff will list the applicable, applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence towards a criteria stated by the planner or specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as a raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure of the applicant to raise the constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of the approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes in action for damages in the circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on the application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, what we have in front of us is CUP twenty three dash zero zero two zero, which is two oh six East Fifth Street. And we will move on to the staff report. Are we still with Leanne for this? Very well, Leanne.
Yes. Hi, thank you, Commissioner. I'm back with a second vacation rental application. Tonight I'll be presenting the case for a conditional use permit at two oh six East Fifth Street. And I enter the entire staff report for CUP twenty three dash zero zero two zero into the record. Next slide, please. The owner and applicant for this request is Jan Cole. Her request is to turn her two bedroom, single family home on East Fifth Street in Newburgh into a short term vacation rental. The zoning for this area is R one, low density residential. And the applicable code portion for review of her request can be found once again in sections fifteen point two two five point zero six zero and fifteen point four four five point three hundred to three fifty of the Newburgh Municipal Code. Next slide, please. This next slide is an aerial image of the residence showing its frontage on the East Fifth Street and its adjacency to Dayton Avenue and South Blaine Street. Next slide, please. And these next images from the zoning map are showing the home's context within the low density zoning district R one. And likewise, its adjacency to high density residential to the east and south. Utilities map shows that the house is also connected to the major water and sewer lines running north of the property along East Fifth Street. The city's GIS also indicates that a stormwater inlet grate is located in the northeast corner of the intersection of East Fifth Street and South Dayton Avenue. Next slide, please. And again, looking to the criteria under which to assess the request by the applicant, we find once again code sections mentioned previously. Importantly, section fifteen point two two five point zero six zero A in regard to the character of the dwelling in relation to the rest of the neighborhood. The single family dwelling is a two bedroom house with a long driveway for use by the potential short term renters. These characteristics are in keeping with the immediate neighbors to the east, west, north, and south. Next slide, please. It's also noted that this neighborhood property is pretty close to the central business district of town, which would be convenient for vacation renters and therefore meets the code requirements stated in section fifteen point two two five point zero six zero B. Next slide, please. And again, looking lastly at the section of code for criterion C that the proposed use is consistent with this code. And this includes Newburgh Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point four four five, Article seven, which we'll look at on the next slide. The highlights for this section of code are as follows. That the vacation rental must be a single family dwelling, which the house at two oh six East Fifth Street is. That the dwelling must be registered with the city and the owner pay a transient lodging tax. And the owner has indicated that she will register with the city and pay the required tax. Third, to maintain standards, the owner is providing four off street parking spaces, occupancy for four guests, and that's no more than two persons for each bedroom, waste collection on each Tuesday of the week, and will prohibit RVs or any other temporary shelters on the premises. And lastly, she acknowledges her responsibility to post contact information for her operator and the police, vacation rental standards, maximum occupancy, and Tuesdays as the garbage pickup day. Last slide, please. And staff is recommending that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty four dash zero three with conditions approving conditional use permit CUP twenty three dash zero zero two zero for a vacation rental home at two oh six East Fifth Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three two one nine A C zero five zero zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Do we have any questions for staff? Hearing none. I'll move on and.
This is Commissioner Wright.
Go ahead.
Is East Fifth Street a one way? Can you only park on one side of it?
That's a good question. Let me see if I can minimize my screen.
I don't recall any one ways.
Are you? Yeah, are you?
No, it's not a one, like a one way parking. But yeah, the applicant has shown that they have four spaces. And I have driven by there in the past and I should have said something about that in expertise, but quite some time ago, I don't go by there early often. And I have noticed the parking spaces driving by because it's so unusual. So I know they're there. So the and quote me if I'm correct or confirm, we only require two spaces, correct?
That's correct. And in her application materials, she provided the site plan showing graphically the four spaces that she has available.
Yeah, I would agree with some testimony submitted by one letter from public. But they have accommodated that and above that.
Exactly.
But I was concerned that people might park on that street and was hoping that the applicant was open to make sure they would not block access to Fifth Street. Any visitors and things like that.
Yeah, the applicant is here this evening. I can let her address that, but I think being that there's only two bedrooms for the home, those scenarios are probably unlikely, but I'll let her speak to that.
All right, thank you.
Hi there.
Any further questions for staff? Okay. At this point, I'd like to open the public record and open the floor for the applicant, which will have fifteen minutes if necessary. And proponents will have five minutes, a primary opponent will have fifteen minutes. And other opponents will have five minutes and then there'll be time for some, five minute time for rebuttal if necessary. And we'd have the applicant on Zoom, is that correct? Okay. Please, please proceed.
Hi there, this is Jan Cole. And just to address the last question. Yeah, we do have four parking spots and ample parking on both sides of the street. The, there's work being done, I think, on four, three or four houses on, on the street now. So if there was any concern, it probably will be alleviated pretty soon here when the workers that have been working on all four houses are, are all done, which I think within the next couple of months. I know mine is nearly done. But that, that is regarding that, that's what's going on. I purchased the, it's a nineteen oh nine bungalow. I purchased it about a year ago to be closer to my family. One of my daughters is an editor of a wine magazine and she spends a lot of time in Yamhill. And I wanted to be close to her and my mom and other daughter. And I wanted to be close to her and my mom and other daughter. Um, I, I've been working on the house over the last year. I've replaced the sewer lines. All the water lines, uh, new drains in the home, the electric has all been redone. It's been quite a project and the house is like brand-new actually now. And um really happy with what um what's been done there. And um my, uh, it is my home. And um I plan on storing all of my personal items in the home and. The reason that I'm, I've applied for the short-term rental permit is because I have been asked, um. I'm, I'm a widow and after twelve years I've met somebody and he happens to live in Australia. And so I'm gonna be getting married and he has a, a really good job here and um he's not ready to retire yet and so. We're planning on going back and forth and so I will be at the house probably four, five months out of the year and then. Um, I thought it would help if I could um have some uh short-term rental uh income coming through the house when I'm away. I have, let's see, I have uh contacted a few different property management companies. In order to to take care of the the property and and the the um renters while I am away. On one side of me, um, is my contractor, actually, Mark, and he's been the person that I hired to do all the work. On my house and uh he's agreed to to keep an eye on it while I'm away and um. Do any fixing up of any things that might be needed by the management company. And on the other side is uh, she's become my friend, she's a fellow animal lover and I. We've been doing, we do fosters with the Newburgh Animal Shelter and so that's been super fun to hang out with her. And you know, all of the neighbors have been really supportive and one actually asked me when it would be ready because she's got. Family coming into town and she wants to get him in the house. So it's been um, you know, it's been bittersweet in the fact that I love the house now. And I really love the neighborhood and, but also I um, I have my, my heart is. Here in Australia with um with Peter, so that's kind of what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no questions, but I, I did, I read that in your uh. Your application and I, and I wanted to say congratulations to you both. How wonderful. What a wonderful thing to happen.
Appreciate that. It's nice to kind of have that um feeling so late in life. I didn't think it would happen again, so.
Interesting, yeah. You never know what life hand hands you. And I again, thank you for your uh investment uh in the improvements and upkeep into the craftsman because indeed this reflects. Uh, some very special community um of our older homes here in Newburgh, so I thank you for that. Um, there's no further questions and I also wanted to tell you um that. The song Silent Night was from an Australian composer, so I can leave you with that too. Um, I appreciate all the information you put down. Uh, Megan Lifestyle and Properties will be your uh um manager?
Yeah, that's who I've um, that's who I've chosen uh over the rest because my mother. Comes to, she's been coming to town while I've been doing the work and um. Because it's just been kind of so busy in the house that she's been renting properties from Megan and so she's really. Uh, she's had a really good experience with her, so I've decided to use her.
That's good to know and yes, I, I read uh Megan's uh. Uh, in uh mission or statement about having minimal impacts and will work diligently to keep it so, so I appreciate uh. Megan's or lifestyle property statement about that too. That is really appreciated. And I have no further questions of the applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. Do we have any other uh proponents or opponents? Okay, at this point, I'd like to close public testimony and get then get a uh final recommendation from staff.
Uh, once again, staff is recommending. Can you hear me? Yep.
And we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, there was some heavy feedback. Um, once again, staff is recommending that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty-two-four dash zero-three. With conditions approving conditional use permit CUP twenty-three. Dash zero-zero-two-zero for a vacation rental home at two oh six East Fifth Street. Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three-two-one-nine AC zero-five-zero-zero-zero.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, do we have any final questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to deliberation and or a motion. What do we think about this application?
Commissioner Wright, it's also seems straightforward and there's no uh, well. Uh, public comments. Uh, one which has been addressed. Uh, no agency comments, the application seems to be straightforward and. I am uh satisfied with the applicant. And the staff's recommendation. Any other commissioners have thoughts?
Seems fairly straightforward to me. How, uh, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Planning Commission Order two-zero-two-four dash zero-two, which approves the requested conditional use permit with the attached conditions of approval and exhibit B.
I will have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Wright, second?
I will have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Abby Sights?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Very well, motion passes. The CUP twenty-three dash zero-zero-two-zero uh conditional use permit is approved. Congratulations and good luck with your new Australian adventures.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thanks.
And I believe that's all we have before us tonight in the way of hearings, so we'll move on to items from staff.
Alright, thank you, commissioners. So, uh, just wanted to point out that we do have a little bit of a change of speed hopefully coming up next month, so we'll have some other things that are tentatively on the agenda. So, and I would say it's tentative still, but the West End Mill District Comprehensive Plan. Text Amendment, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment slash zoning and development code amendments. So this is actually something that was. In progress between approximately twenty-eighteen and beginning in twenty-nineteen, last contact or staff activity on it was back in twenty-twenty. And so we think that this may have come to the previously. But we're trying to pick it back up after talking to the city council about our work plan. It looks like it really just needs to be. Adopted and doesn't require other work. So this will essentially be a refresh, assuming that staff can dust it off quickly enough. And that there's no hang-ups with respect to noticing and public. So that could be a bit of a change in in kind of the, the typical pace of things last couple of months. And then other.
That's for March?
That's what we tentatively have scheduled for March.
Okay.
That's correct. And we do have some other things that could be coming up, uh specifically some of the first items associated with the Colina subdivision on the north side of town. Could be coming sometime later this spring as well. So we'll see when those, those arrive. So the Colina subdivision is that area along the north side of Mountain View that was approved for a subdivision last year.
That's the one that's north of Villa?
Uh, if you, yes, if you took Villa going north to where it tees with Mountain View.
Into the field.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's some of the first activity that would be there and that's part of the Springbrook Master Plan.
Okay.
Could you please spell that?
Which, which, uh.
Uh, Colinas?
Oh, Colina is, I believe it's C O L I N A. There could be two L's, but I think there's only one.
Yep, thank you.
That was one that went to, I believe, this commission and city council at some point last year. And it approved by city council approximately October-ish, uh, maybe a little earlier, like September. So, so that would be some of the first activity that could come forward on those, although I don't see that on the forward-looking calendar memo. But I know that that's something that has been discussed as coming down the pipeline. And the other general that I just wanted to give kind of an, an oral update, there's not a whole lot of items on other issues, but one, I wanted to introduce our new community development director. So we have Scott Siegel, who is with us, and Scott, you'd like to introduce yourself. Go ahead.
Thank you, Clay. Good evening, Chair Dale and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, delighted to be joining you. My name is Scott Siegel. Um, I've been in the planning field in Oregon and across the west for the past, uh. I don't know if I should admit it, but for, for a while. And uh, I had, I, you know, I've had a healthy diet of of development work, entitlement work, both in the public and private sectors. And policy work and uh, so I've been really excited about joining the team and Clay and. And the staff, uh, you've got a, a really, as you know, a high, very capable, high-performing. Lean group here and I'm very excited to be joining the, the staff here. Um, previously, I. I worked with Multnomah County for a short time. Before that, I was, and I was their planning director. Uh, before that, I was with the city of Lake Austin. About ten years and in that time, we saw over two billion dollars in construction. Um, a lot of work in our two town centers redevelopment, um, some master planning. Uh, and a lot of infill development, so I think with that experience, I, I really look forward to working. Uh, with uh the development community and again, the citizens of Newburgh to make sure that we're. Uh, we're really attuned, we're really paying attention to design quality as well as housing production. And of course, you know, working toward implementing the council goals around employment land and uh job creation and. Um, local economic development. So those are my sort of top uh level priorities as I've been directed by uh. By the city manager and uh working with the planning commission. I. Maybe relevant to this group, I, I've served on a planning commission for four years and so I have uh some. Uh, sympathy and also high respect for you all and the work that you do. And also served on a, a historic resources advisory board in Lake Oswego. And uh, as well as neighborhood associations, so I, 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 I think I bring sort of a well-rounded perspective and. Uh, will really be excited to learn more about Newburgh and and really set down some roots here as I serve the community, so. That's my introduction and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. So since we have two new people here and we, we did this last month, but apparently they. Uh, the commissioner we were gonna have decided they didn't have the, the time available for the commitment. Why don't we just do a little uh, uh, round robin introduction since we've got two new members as well? And so um, uh, I can start. And so my name is Jason Dale. I've been on the planning commission since two thousand twelve. And uh, I'm with, uh, my family runs uh Sportsman Air Park here in town. We've only been, been here for, so let's see, what are we, what are we celebrating this year? So it's nineteen forty-six, so the not quite. Eighty years, so it's seventy, seventy-eight years. Uh, and you know, we, we try to, try to keep abreast and I, I joined the commission because. I've always had the, had the idea that uh if you wanna see something done and you're not trying to at least see something done and. Right with it, then what do you actually, you have no right to complain. And so here, here I've been. Uh, and that's not much more to it than that. Um, Mike?
Uh, I've been on the commission for a, a little over a year. Um, I retired as the Chief Executive Officer of Lifelight, uh, the air ambulance service. Uh, I also, uh, with my business partner, own some restaurants, one locally, uh, Old Town. So, being retired, I figured I'd volunteer for a few things. I also sit on the McMinnville Airport uh commission board. That's it for me.
Chris, do you wanna go?
Sure. Um, I've been a planning commissioner since June of twenty-nineteen and I also have longstanding roots and. Roots in Newburgh and my father was a developer and started dragging me to Newburgh. In my junior high and high school years and that's where I first learned about building and codes and. Those kind of things. I'm a, went to Portland State and I'm a research scientist. I'm a specialized in UBB radiation damage to terrestrial and aquatic bi- biota. Um, atmospheric sciences, obviously. Background in geology, geography, and a bunch of other geeky fun stuff in nature and city planning. I also have a GIS certificate and actually love to really do this and be involved in my city and. And love to contribute and thank you for joining us and our wonderful, yes, Newburgh staff. I too am very excited about our uh new staff members. And that we uh do some great work here for everybody in Newburgh. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Abby Sights, step up to the hot mic. Tell us a little about about yourself.
Um, my name's Abby Sights. I am a sophomore in high school. Um, I am the new student commissioner. I joined this team because I. Wanted to experience the volunteer work. And I wanna see what's going on in the community, so. That's why I joined.
Be, be honest, how hard did this relative twist your arm to do this? Hmm? No? Just teasing. Okay, thank you. Um, you guys wanna, you guys wanna go ahead?
I'm Faye Bates and I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but I assist with the planning. Uh, commission and I've been with the C Newburgh for two years and I came from. The title and, and uh development background in the public or private sector, so. Having fun and if anybody wants to know, that's my daughter.
Oh dear. I was right then.
That's funny, Faye. My daughter just moved back home too and yeah, I'm eventually gonna get her involved too. That's awesome.
So, and I'm Clay Downing and so I've been with the city for just over a year at this point, spent the last. Eight or so years before that with County Ventura and my wife and I wanted to relocate to this area. I'm initially from Indianapolis and. It missed and landed in California when I was trying to relocate initially. I just landed there for a lot longer than I expected, but it's been a really nice community to get used to and explore and so. The commissioners and the public who are involved with all sorts of things around the city really make it special. So it's been nice, nice to get used to and to figure out.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I think that's everybody. So do we have any further items?
I, uh, just, yeah, just two items for me. So the one I just wanted to mention, and we've talked about this a little bit previously, I think we mentioned that it was coming up last time. So there are two notices of funding availability that went out in the last month, so I think at the last meeting. We announced that they were coming up and they actually went out once for our Newburgh, uh, Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the other one is for our Construction Excise Tax Fund. So between those two funds, there's up to four hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and seven dollars available for affordable housing projects. They do have, because they're from two different funds, some of the timelines and the amounts are different. There's a much more substantial amount up to three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand fifty dollars. Available in the Construction Excise Tax Fund, so a big chunk is just on that one side. Um, and so those are available and they can be found on the city's website, those notices of funding availability, so we're really hoping we get some strong applications. Um, and some projects to help affordable housing in Newburgh. And then the other thing I wanted to give an update on, this one I'm saving for last because I thought this commission would be most interested in it and I wanted you to pay attention. The um, is short-term rental update and the short-term rental ad hoc committee. So the short-term rental ad hoc committee had a meeting on February first, so that changed when we met last in January. They were scheduled to meet in mid-January. They ended up not having enough people to convene, so they rescheduled for February. And that may be their last meeting. It's, they don't have another one on the books at this point because they were able to wrap up their recommendation. Similar to how your commission did back a number of months ago. And if, and that recommendation will be going forward to city council. I do have, it's, it's a relatively long laundry list. So I don't need to read it to you, but I will be happy to send it in correspondence afterwards and that correspondence, so that the public can get it. I'll make sure that gets. Uh, pulled in for a future update, so that folks can see it. The um, but I wanted to highlight some of the things. It does consider. Um, modifying or recommends changing some procedures to make it somewhat easier in certain zones. Um, modifying or recommends changing some procedures to make it somewhat easier in certain zones, so they wouldn't all be type threes, they would be mostly, they would be. Type twos is the recommendation, but it also recommends changing some of the criteria. Recommends a citywide cap of no more than two percent of households being vacation rentals. Recommends a number of items associated with noticing, which they kind of talked about generally as good neighbor provisions. Um, so make sure that it didn't just happen at permitting time, they also have a few recommendations associated with enforcement and compliance. To make sure everybody's following the same rules, so they they had some good ones, when that goes to city council, which were tentatively scheduled to do on March fourth. That's going to include their recommendation as well as this commission's recommendation, as well as the research paper that was done last year. As well as the statement that we got from Newburgh Police Department and we'll really be going there, not for the city council to adopt something, but to give staff. Work if they choose to. So those are some of the things that came out of that, so those were, those meetings are all still archived if you go to the events. And meetings, uh links or webpages that are available on the city's website, anybody can tune into those or find the media materials. Or folks can just ask, we'll be happy to share. So, and that's what we have from staff this month.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, now the last thing we have is any items from commissioners?
Yes, Commissioner Wright, um, did you guys see from the Oregon Housing and Community Services? Um, O H C S and the Corporation for Supportive Housing. They're excited to announce Oregon's fifth supportive housing institute. And this institute is over the spring and summer of this year, beginning in May. The institutes provides targeted training, technical assistance and project planning support. To development teams seeking to develop permanent supportive housing, P S H acronym. In their communities, eligible teams must include a minimum. A housing development owner partner, a supportive service provider partner, a property management partner. Anyway, um, this looks like a really great thing that we uh, I was wondering if the city is participating in. Or if you knew about it.
I was not familiar with that announcement, but uh commissioner, if you would like to send that over, we'll be happy to take a look at it and see if there's anyone we can share it with. Since we have funds available for affordable housing here, it seems like. If it seems like there's folks who've expressed interest who might be able to benefit from that training, we'd be happy to help spread the word.
Wonderful, yeah, that was uh back in January twenty six, so yeah, that would be wonderful, I sure will forward that to you. And I did go to the uh land use uh. Oh, I wish I put it, how to stay out of hot water as a planning commissioner? And there was a couple takeaways from that, but I'll wait till other commissioners are here um. And inform everybody of that, I am very excited in June. To uh look at the daycare facilities and the standard updates, what is that entail? Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, so one of the things that we did, uh I believe was back in December is, or actually, I take that back, it was. In January, we took a work plan forward to city council based on certain things that we've gotten direction about over the last few years. But we tried to figure out what what are the highest priorities that are still of the highest level of relevance to the city council for staff to be spending time on. Now that we're finally at full capacity, thanks to Scott joining the team and. So we're hoping that we can have some of those legislative code amendment, those sorts of things that really are the table setting for the city. And so the daycare standards one is one that was brought forward by one of the counselors during twenty twenty three and wanted staff to work on it. And so that seems like it's high enough and has a tight enough scope of work that we think that we'll be able to move that forward relatively well. So there was a number of items, I think it was in the October city council meeting that was brought forward by the city councillor. Asked for staff to investigate and the other councillors concurred and so we're gonna be kind of looking at the way that it's defined. The way that it's categorized, what procedures those uses have to go through. And trying to determine if it is excessively laborious for folks to set up daycare and similar sorts of facilities. And so that's really what we're looking at, so some of it is just initially figuring out what the existing setting is and then we're gonna speak to. Likely that councillor and see if there are certain organizations or practitioners or other stakeholders that were involved. And see if we can learn a bit more about, you know, why has this been a pain point in the past, why were we asked to work on this? And learn a bit more about it and see if there's from a policy setting standpoint, something we can do to work better here in Newburgh.
That is absolutely wonderful, I had a neighbor that wanted to reach out and. Do childcare and when I started looking up the codes of law and handed her a half an inch packet, she gave up. Almost instantly and it was sad to see, cause I know we need so many more childcare providers out there to help. Get our workforce back, you know, in swing, so right on. I am thankful that for that city councillor for bringing that up, kudos. And then I would like to also request, um, planning commissioner, request that staff. Update us at the March twenty twenty four meeting of any enrolled or passed. Land use laws and environmental bills. Um, I'm already getting uh. People asking me about um the G U G B expansion proposal. I've already looked at it and I do believe thirty percent of the land must be dedicated to affordable housing. And when I tell people that's uh sixty years on the title. Um, I li- I'm, I'm not sure uh what. You know, the city is commented or has taken a stand on that yet at all either. And uh will the vacant planning commission seats be advertised or considered from the recent pool of applicants? Out of curiosity.
Don't know with respect to the, so the the recruitment process is typically handled for commissions out of the recorder's office. So I honestly don't know if they'll be going through the pool or re-advertising, but I would be. I would expect that they will likely look through the pool of folks who have expressed interest recently, go back to the pool. And if there are not enough folks there, then then they would re-advertise.
Okay. Oh, that that's great, thank you. Um, and then uh when when I was trying to help Nina find. Where you guys were at, I didn't realize that I hadn't received the transmission that the uh. One of the C U Ps had withdrawn their application, so I should reframe my question in uh saying. Or requesting to the planning commissioner that commission. That we may want to consider additional participation guidelines and procedures to address a deadlock. Uh, decision in the future, uh something like table for two months until a planning commission can review. Uh, maybe some additional guidelines that uh future commissions can draw from.
Commissioner, I'd like.
Consideration.
Commissioner, I'd like to respond to that if you don't mind, I did speak to the city's attorney. Following the conversation and the and the situation we ran into a couple of months ago where we did run into that deadlock situation. Which I don't think anyone particularly enjoyed, cause it's it's challenging for any group, but one of the things that we ran into the most readily and. Um, was looking at the procedure under type three procedures, which are those that apply most directly to this commission. And so within those type pre- three procedures, it basically has a statement where it says. All type three decisions shall be heard and decided by the planning commission and so. From the city's attorney was that, that because that's an and, it needs to happen here. And it does not grant the ability to refer out um in the case of a deadlock, so it's kind of on the commission to. Speak amongst themselves, to deliberate and to to do and make a decision. So it it challenged for the commission, I I won't take that too lightly, but it's something that the commission is more or less stuck with through the code.
Okay. I just have to pre-think that one out.
We don't get to be.
Yeah. Sorry, go.
Faye, did you have something?
I was just gonna comment that I did speak to the city recorder, they did have another applicant um for the for Nina's position. That they were gonna bring to the uh mayor to see if he would be willing to. Uh, you know, to have him join our planning commission and um. They are going to be doing a spring uh recruitment for planning commission, so. If he is not wanting to um put that person on the planning commission, we will be doing a recruitment in next, starting next month. For both um at least Jeff's position and if not uh for both of them, so.
Okay. Okay. Have anything? Okay, once again, welcome to Director Siegel, Mr. Seitz, thank you very much and we are adjourned.